I call to order the pre-agenda meeting for Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019 of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners. First off, I'd like to note that Commissioner Howe is present, not in body, but in voice on our remote location, a remote, secure location, I guess. And so he'll be participating as the case may be. So do you want to, for the record, state that you're participating? Gene?
Commissioner Howe's present and accounted for.
All right, so the electrons are working, we're good to go.
Live from Washington DC.
Appreciate the effort to get me there with you.
Okay, good. Appreciate your attending the meeting of the NCACC and the National Boards.
That booming voice, I feel like there should be a burning bush somewhere.
If you could review any adjustments to the agenda, Beth?
There are no adjustments to the agenda.
Okay, any adjustments by any commissioners? Hearing none, then we will move forward. We have no special presentations this evening. We do have an appointment before the Board. That is, Mr. John Ferguson at 7:00 will give us an update on a $2 million grant from the North Carolina Department of Transportation for taxiway lighting at the Statesville Regional Airport. We'll have a public hearing at 7:00 to consider adoption of a bond authorizing $115,500,000 in school bonds and $10.5 million in community college bonds. And so that just tees up Item 8, administrative matters that are appropriate for our consent agenda. And I'd ask Ms. Jones if you would please tee those up with respect to staff members.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. The first item was a request from the Health Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 12 to expend $49,476 of the multi-year $274,963 awarded community linkages of care of overdose prevention grant from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. And I think Norma Rife is going to be making this presentation.
Thank you. So this grant is regarding opioids. We at the Health Department are still trying to find ways to mitigate the opioid overdose epidemic, and funding is definitely one of those. This opioid-related grant is very similar to the almost $86,000 grant that was awarded in November of 2018 to support the peer support specialist, the position that Sandy Tabor-Grey is currently in, for the community response team within Blair Ritchie's EMS department. However, this is a $274,963 multi-year grant running through the end of August of 2022. So there's going to be a total of four terms where we will spend a certain amount of the funding in each of those terms. So the Iredell County Health Department is requesting approval to receive and expend $49,473 of this multi-year $274,963 already awarded grant. The grant is the Community Linkages to Care for Overdose Prevention and Response Grant from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. And that's within the division of, it's within the division of public health. So if you take out this $49,473, that leaves the 225 for 90 of that multi-year grant that will be part of the future Iredell Health Department budget, so we don't have to do future amendments. So because there are multiple terms, right now we're just asking for the 49 for 73. So the Iredell County Health Department again chooses to partner with the Iredell County Emergency Medical Services Department to work with us to fulfill the agreement addendum, scope of work, and related requirements, and there are many of them. So many of them they will manage, and many of them we will manage. They've been very successful. The quantitative metrics outcome report showed significant success, especially when you consider they really just started in April of 2019. So this funding will support the current full-time peer support specialist specifically to follow up with patients who have experienced a non-fatal opioid overdose. In addition, the grant expands the program to include a .40 FTE, that's 16 hours a week, peer support specialists, and that'll be also in the EMS department. So this money is kind of flow-through money that is being handed over to EMS to fulfill the requirements. And you guys are probably more than familiar with this grant. So this part-time position is going to provide the extra peer support specialist resources that are needed to be successful, and will create, create some efficiencies and effectiveness for the program as well. Because there's a, there's a lot of things to do for this grant outside of just peer support work that Sandy Tabor-Grey currently does. So, and those two peer support specialists will work as a team, and they're going to be interacting with, within 72 hours of non-fatal overdose individuals to help them through their journey.
Any questions of Norma?
Could you repeat the amount that you called out a little bit, or 49,000?
The amount is a little confusing. The total awarded amount is $274,963. It's a multi-year grant running through the end of August of 2022. However, right now, we're just asking a budget revision to receive and expend 49,473 of that, because the balance of that grant is going to go in future Iredell County Health Department budgets during the budget session, during the budget year.
The budget amendment doesn't say that figure.
It's a $500 difference.
Right.
We show 49,973 in the budget amendment, and it says 49,973 in the yellow highlighted service period details, and then it says 49,473 in the Department recommendation and on the front page as well, so.
The correct, yes, the correct amount is 274,963.
That's for the total. What is the budget amendment that we're releasing right now? Is it 49,973?
49,473.
49,473.
49,473.
Okay, so we need to change the budget amendment as it's written.
The budget amendment, the back sheet you're talking about?
Yeah.
Someone want to do some quick math here?
Okay, yes.
And total this up?
Yes, okay.
Yeah, that's what I was going to do.
Okay.
So we don't want to be $500 off.
Okay, let me refer to the grant real quick, I so apologize. There are too many numbers in this grant.
Chairman Mallory, may I recommend that the Board consider the higher amount? Because anything that is unspent could revert to future years. That way, we're not cutting ourselves short since it's a multi-year grant, and the budget amendment has already spelled out for the higher amount.
Very good.
And that's what's on the budget amendment anyway.
Correct.
Yes.
49,973.
That's what you're going to get.
Thank you, sorry for the confusion.
No worries, no problem.
Okay, any further questions?
Oh, yeah, I did. Excuse me, so we have two people that are, that are part-time. I mean, are they genuinely part-time employees or are they full-time employees? We just budget, we just pay for them out of a different pot of money for the rest of their time?
So right now, we have a full-time peer support specialist, and that's Sandy Tabor-Grey. And we're proposing the .4 FTE additional support, so that'll be a new position in EMS funded both by this grant.
A full-time?
Be part-time.
One is a full-time position, and one is a .40 FTE, 16 hours per week, so.
Is that, is that person going to work for 16 hours and then not work anywhere else? Or are we putting them on the county payroll somewhere else for the, for 20, 26 hours, 24 hours a week so that they get their 40?
It's my understanding that it is just .4 FTE, no further FTE added to that anywhere else, just for this program, the part-time position.
Can we get somebody to work for 16 hours a week that has the skill set to do that job?
That would be up to Ms. Blair Ritchie?
We do.
Okay. And, and this is, this is all part of that program that you briefed, I'm directing my question to Blair, to the program that you briefed just on the fall retreat, this is in essence funding that program, that's what we're saying. Okay.
Yes, it's part of the peer support specialist program.
It all comes from grant funding.
And just to explain a little bit further, for the part-time, it's not absolutely mandatory for them to have that peer support specialist credential. It is built into the requested funding that we can provide that training. So if we find a good part-time candidate, that this is something that they're passionate in, it's also some administrative support. What we are trying to do is free up more of Sandy's time so she can continue that direct, you know, that direct links, those direct conversations with the individuals in need. And so this person's going to be doing some of the backend office review, the chart review, and trying to identify these individuals, and working with some of our outside partners as well. So that, that's how it's kind of structured.
All right, good enough.
And to add to that, in the grant, it also opens it up to do some of that peer support as well, as that position can grow.
Okay, good deal. I would just ask, and we talked about this, Ms. Jones, that, that, I mean, these grant, these grants are, are funding the program right now, and actually President Trump has actually been a pretty big advocate of getting after the opioid epidemic, but, you know, if he's not reelected and this money goes away, and, and if people want it to stay in place, we, we need to have some, I would say, let's make sure we're collecting the, the number, or numbers that show what's the dollar cost and benefits, that if we did not do this, what it would cost us to be dealing with these, these addicts, okay, these addicts, and, and the costs associated with, with, with that. So it's kind of like, I always say, that people assume that the cost of doing nothing is zero, and that's never the case. And this is one of those programs where we're going to spend some money, but I think we also need to be pretty diligent about how much money we really think that we saved by spending the money, so that if the program isn't funded in the future, the default position of this Board has always been that when the grant money goes away for salary positions, the, the position goes away. In this particular case, we're spending money for something that we think is costing us money otherwise, it's a little bit unique. So, so I'm just kind of giving everybody the, the fair warning, that, that the default position is that if the grant goes away, these positions go away. So we need to be pretty diligent in our data collection now and not try to recreate it two years from now.
If that, if that happens, we'll have to make some serious decisions on what to do, and that needs to be decided on a case-by-case basis.
Right.
Yeah. And one, oh, you were going to say something? No, wait, okay. Just to note, the county is participating in the national lawsuit against the pharmaceutical companies that have manufactured opioids and, and the distributors that have made a huge profit on those, and you may have read about that in the papers, but they're continuing to move towards, see if they can get to a global settlement, but that may or may not happen right away. But nonetheless, the point of that suit is to reimburse counties and states for the costs of this epidemic. And so when those funds come in, this is one of those direct attributable costs that would be appropriate to continue the funding of this and other programs if their efficacy is, is demonstrated by the metrics that you're, that you're running. But I really want to commend the Health Department and the task force. I know Vice Chairman Bowles has been very much involved in that from the get-go, and our EMS department for being proactive and trying to, you know, have that element of cost avoidance, and, and hopefully, you know, repairing of people's lives, because that's what the bottom line is.
Would you like a?
So, is there a motion?
Yes, sir.
No? Is there a consent?
Consent.
Okay, all right.
Thank you for your time and support.
Thank you, Norm, appreciate it.
The next on him is a requen, a request, and Kent Green is here to make that request on behalf of Emergency Management and Fire Services for approval of Budget Amendment Number 13, along with contingent approval of a 59-month lease purchase agreement and accompanying resolution with Motorola Communications for $2.3 million of portable and mobile radios to be signed out by and distributed to volunteer fire departments serving Iredell County.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, Mr. Chairman. As you may or may not remember, we applied for a grant through the Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program. A little over a year ago, we were notified just several weeks ago that we did not receive that grant. It would have been for $2.3 million, $300,000 of that was our local match. We budgeted for that in the Countywide Fire Tax District this year. We have those funds available. When, throughout that process, we worked with Motorola to identify how many radios we could purchase with that $2.3 million. We had an estimate that we had used for the grant process, but once we learned that we were not going to get the grant, we tried to get creative and figure out if there were any ways that we could purchase additional radios over and above just the $300,000 that we had budgeted this year. Motorola provided a proposal for a 59-month lease that will provide 463 portable radios or handheld radios and 130 mobile radios. These are 800 megahertz, be on the Viper system. They will all be capable of staying on the Viper system for quite some time. We're in a process right now where Viper is phasing out older model radios. So I do have a feeling in the next few budget cycles, you will see requests from our department as well as EMS and perhaps the Sheriff's Office to replace some of the older models. With this proposal, we'll put a portable radio in the hands of every volunteer firefighter in Iredell County. And it will put an 800-megahertz radio in every apparatus in the county, which will make us fully compatible with the Viper system, which is the direction the Board suggested that we moved in several years ago. We've been behind the eight ball, but this is an opportunity for us to use funds that we've already budgeted, funds that we have projected for budgets in the County Fire District in the coming years to make the lease payment on these radios. And with the exception of some minor discrepancies in terms and conditions in the lease agreement, I think Ms. Valdez has that at this point, between her and purchasing, and purchasing on our side, trying to work out the details. But if approved, we would ask that you allow, Ms. Jones, once those terms and conditions are rectified, to move forward with that lease agreement.
Kent, could you describe the problem that we had relative to radio communications that we're fixing through this process?
Sure. Right now, we operate on five separate radio systems just in Iredell County. That is the VHF system that the fire departments and EMS used to use, the fire departments still use it, the UHF system that is the backup now for the Sheriff's Office, the Viper system, which is the statewide 800-megahertz radio system, and the UWASI system, or what the South End, Southern Iredell County uses that's funded out of Charlotte Mecklenburg's Urban Area Security Initiative. And then the State's Full Fire and Police have their own 800-megahertz system. So this consolidates all of that in, for the fire side, and takes us to a, more of a even level to where EMS and Sheriff's Office are today. They've made the move to Viper. We've got a lot more firefighters and a lot more fire apparatus than we do EMS vehicles, rescue vehicles, and, and Sheriff's Office vehicles. So this will get us over that next hurdle and take one more discipline to the 800-megahertz realm. We will always use VHF for some points, such as paging, and I believe ECOM is in the process now of upgrading that system to a repeated system, so we have better coverage on the paging side of things. But this will allow for better all-around communications, plus allow all of our fire departments to be statewide assets if the need were to arise.
Is the UHF used for the tactical, on the scene?
I think everything is done on the Viper system on the Sheriff's side. I would defer to Sheriff Campbell if he would want to address that, but most everything on the Sheriff's side is on Viper at this point, and UHF is their backup.
Okay, so it's the backup?
Correct.
And, and all of the fire is paged through the UHF, correct?
Fire is paged through VHF.
VHF.
And that's been historical across the state and across the country for decades.
That's my next question. Most of the firemen that I see, when they receive a call, they look at their phone.
They do, that's.
Active 911.
Active 911. ISO does not recognize that as a primary method of dispatch because of the unreliability of a, of a private third-party service providing that technology. But the radios that we are buying do have what's called tone paging capability. So at points in the future, all the fire departments will have digital tones, which will be programmed into those individual radios, so the need for a pager in the future will decline.
Okay, so you can set that radio to where it only pages for your calls?
Correct. Morseville does the same thing now, there's your all pager-activated radios.
Okay. How about Morseville Fire and Morseville Police, are they both on UWASI?
They are, yes, sir. And they pay a hefty fee to be on the UWASI system. Charlotte does not provide that system to the departments for free.
But that system is for, if you need to talk to the street department for some reason, if you need to talk to Public Works, whatever, it's a more comprehensive type system, correct?
It is a more open system, I'll put it that way. Viper was developed for just first responders, and it does not allow for Public Works or sanitation or that, those types of activities to be on that, that system.
I know when we first talked about 800-megahertz trunking and, and Viper and statewide and state control, that an apprehension there was that at some point, the state may say, well, we need these frequencies back for some reason. In the past two to three years that we've been on it, has that ever happened?
It's never happened, and we're actually in the process right now of doubling the number of what we call tac channels or operational channels for the fire department.
So we feel pretty confident that it won't happen?
Yes, sir. They're, they're expanding Viper monthly.
Any other questions?
James, I have a, I have a question, James.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Kent, Kent, during the 59-month lease purchase agreement, are all of these units under warranty during that time?
They have a standard two-year warranty, and, and they will be under what, a protection plan based on the outline of the lease agreement, which is way above my pay grade. I would defer to Dean and Lisa on those aspects.
Okay. Can we, Mr. Chairman, can we put this off till 7? I think with the investment and, and the advancements we've made with the fire departments to do a new funding model, I think this would be of vital interest to the public and the fire departments to announce, you know, this lease and upgrading their equipment. Do you think that?
I have no objection to a broader audience hearing this discussion. If you can replicate your summary of why we're doing it.
Be my pleasure.
You know, four years ago, the, the fire department volunteers across the board were very concerned about communication issues, and that's something we've been addressing ever since, piece by piece, from the upgrade of consoles, computer-aided dispatch, to the adoption of, you know, getting everybody on at least one frequency, one, one set, but not having the actual radios in the field to be able to integrate everyone in. And people are having to respond, they've got three or four, you know, got a pager, got a phone, got one radio for UHF, another radio for VHF, and, and so now it's, it's being simplified, and we're hopefully going to be answering those needs. So certainly, I think that's of interest to the, the broader public and that, that volunteer community.
And here you said, this year, Iredell County was not awarded the Assistance to Fire, 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 Assistance to Firefighters Grant. Was there a reason why, number one, do we normally get it? And is there, if, if, if we normally do get it, is there a reason why this year we did not?
To my knowledge, the county has never applied for an Assistance to Firefighters Grant. The Firefighters Association applied last year for a very similar grant and was also denied. In looking at the projects that were awarded in North Carolina, the, the highest single project was around $800,000, and it was for apparatus. Very few grants were awarded for communications pieces. I think there was such a run on communications after 9/11, when these grants really took the forefront, and the communications aspect has now sort of taken a backseat to other equipment and, and resources. That's my opinion.
I remember after 9/11, the money was flowing. Well, well, what happened was, we realized, you know, we're supposed, when, when, when they came in and said, okay, okay, we want places like Iredell County, who has all these volunteer firemen, to be, they're, and we got help with a, a lot of funding, so that if something happened in Charlotte, that we could go help. And what they found was, none of the people from Statesville could talk to the people in Charlotte, none of the people in Concord could talk to the people in Charlotte, none of the people in Rock Hill could talk to the folks in Charlotte. And that's how this all kind of got started. And, and so anyway, okay, so, so the fact that we didn't get it isn't something that is just, we, it was applied, we did wrong.
No, sir. We even had a letter of support from Senator Tillis that was submitted with our application process, but there were just simply wasn't enough money this year to fund all the requests.
We understand.
You know, I think, this is just my theory, but I think a lot of times with all the 9/11 stuff that came through and the money that was flowing, I think they, they did it to a point, and then I think folks are looking to, well, this money's going to be sustaining us for communication forever, and they just said, we can't buy everybody radios forever. We, we stepped up after 9/11 to kind of get you there, now it's your responsibility to maintain.
Well, Charlotte lost their UWASI funding for this upcoming fiscal year, so we're sort of standing back and waiting to see what that will do as far as an impact goes to the UWASI radio system. So more to follow on that.
And that's a far-reaching thing for if this county, half of this county goes to Charlotte for some major catastrophe. Charlotte for some major catastrophe. Somebody's got to cover this county, so you're reaching out into other jurisdictions to come and cover this county at that point, so.
You know, the Homeland, and this is off the subject, and I know I'm a bit on a tangent, but the Homeland Security money was never allocated based upon where the risk was. It was allocated by congressional district, which meant that a congressional district in New York City was getting the same amount of money as a congressional district in North Dakota, which is bigger landmass. But I mean, what's the threat of terrorist activity in North Dakota or Wyoming or Iredell County? And so, there was a whole lot of money being spread. You know, it went from being a program that was supposed to address risk, and it became an equity program. And then, of course, once you do that, it gets too big, and then it all goes away. So, anyway, lesson learned. All right, yep, let's put it at seven o'clock, and we can approve it then.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Just two things. One, and I can follow up with Mr. Lael on this, but the warranty question, there's very little language, and it's that their standard equipment warranty applies. They disclaim all other warranties. But that's something for Mr. Lael and I to follow up on, because it doesn't give the exact terms of that. But second, I want to make sure that the board is aware that your current contracts with the volunteer fire departments does not include providing them this equipment. And so I would recommend that there's some formal agreement with them when this equipment is provided, because under this lease, you're still responsible for it. It's still on your insurance. You're responsible for replacing it. If it disappears, you're still the one holding the ticket. So there's no formal agreement right now to give them this equipment. And so that's something, a next step after this is worked out, that I would recommend.
That goes to the inventory issues.
Yes. And the last radios we bought for the fire departments, we did have them sign for those radios, so we could track their serial numbers and who had them. And I did not provide that to Mr. Lael, as I promised, so that's my shortcoming there. But there is a process in place, but I do agree that there probably needs to be an addendum to the contract that we cover this, they cover that, in case of damage or loss.
A lot of times, sometimes volunteers move, and when they move, all their gear goes with them. We had that happen in the Army when people went over the hill. So, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We'll revisit this at seven o'clock for a blast.
Thank you, Kent. The next item is a request on behalf of Planning and Development, and Matthew Todd is here to make this request for approval of a grant application with the Charlotte Regional Transportation Plan to pursue a transportation plan.
Good evening to the board. This grant, as you guys are aware, the department's been working on a countywide transportation plan, and this grant kind of came up on our radar here the last couple of months. We did go ahead and submit for this based on the deadline to kind of put a holding spot in, but we are officially asking for the blessing of the board to move forward with this request. It's an 80%, 80%, 20% match. The CRTPO would put up 80%, and the county would be responsible for the remaining 20%. Based on estimates from three different contractors, we figured roughly $150,000 to hire a consultant to do this for the county, which put the numbers for the CRTPO at 120, and then our match would be the 20% at 30,000. I would imagine we'll know if we're awarded the grant in the February time, in the February month. And then, of course, we cannot start the process, I mean formally, with a consultant until July. But we have been doing work already, so this will tie in to the existing work that we've been doing over the past six months.
What's the scope of that project? What are you looking to accomplish with this program?
Sure. You've got several transportation plans in the county with the municipalities that are either underway or have recently been adopted. Mooresville tied it into land use plans. Statesville did a standalone plan. Troutman has a plan that addresses some transportation. So this is really to connect those plans, you know, looking for those missing pieces that haven't been addressed. The county's official, I'll say, the older comprehensive transportation plan is a document DOT put together. I think it dates 2008. CRTPO now kind of manages the official CTP or Comprehensive Transportation Plan for the region, but it's much different than that older plan from DOT. And we need something a little more specific than what we currently have to work with. So again, we would look at those existing plans in place, the surrounding counties, and just try to match those pieces together.
So we're filling in the gaps from the municipalities?
Correct.
Because I get a lot of comments all the time about, the county doesn't do roads, and the county doesn't do transportation, and neither does the county care about it. But we do. And I think this is a piece that shows that we are actively working with municipalities and with people to try to get, unclog the jams and try to plan for future grants.
Yes.
I think I can speak a little bit to it. Of course, Commissioner Robertson is our member on the CRTPO. To be able to effectively advocate and score highly for projects in the county, there has to be a plan that those projects are based on. Otherwise, it is very difficult to get that plan, that request to score so that it can be put on the project list. And when we do put them on the project list, these are, you know, 15, 20 years out before they're funded and designed and built. So we've got to be thinking well ahead and anticipating requirements. So in addition to the municipalities' plans that they have just produced, and they are good plans, we want them to nest in the overall county plan so that, you know, we can harmonize our plan with theirs, but also that we can address outside of those municipalities some mobility issues that the county needs to think about in terms of moving people from the north to the south in an alternate to I-77. And there's just not likely to be dollars for a four-lane parkway to be put anywhere because you have $8 billion worth of projects in the state with $1 billion worth of funding chasing to try to take care of those. So eventually, those projects are funded when there's congestion. And that's why it aggravates people, is why haven't you thought about putting a road here before it was congested? Well, we're trying to get ahead of that by having a comprehensive plan that takes into account factors that intuitively, we're not necessarily aware of, such as the amount of commercial traffic, the classification of the different trucks, their pattern of movement throughout the county. Because the ones that know where they're going are the folks like local deliveries, Chaney Brothers, the flour mills, grain mills. All of those have folks running on a lot of secondary roads in the county. And we need to figure out a way for them to be able to get, as an alternative to 77, to the eastern side of Mooresville, and then connect into basically Highway 3 to be able to move down to 85, or be able to connect across into Rowan County. So how we do that using our existing road net is going to be really the key here, how do you improve bridges? How do you selectively widen or improve intersections so that that mobility is enhanced without having to try to go for the moon, which is the four-lane parkway, which will never get funded? So we've got to figure out how to bite this off bit by bit and have an overall concept in addition to simply connecting the pipes between the municipalities. So those are the two overall objectives. And we'll be using the Lake Norman Transportation Planning Commission that we've been members of for several years, which the municipalities are also members of, to include Davidson, and work to refine the consultant requirements and the general way ahead with the staffs of those respective towns and our own planning staff, and then move on to incorporate input from businesses and other stakeholders so that we can come up with a plan that will be relevant and be focused on the future trends and try to get ahead of those trends to include, you know, the artificial intelligence aspects of driverless cars and how you incorporate that. Because if you can, you know, it's going to be a reality 10 years from now. So this is a first stab at doing that and doing it right. That's why we're looking at getting a consultant to come in that has access to data that we don't internally have to be able to make good choices.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to make two comments on this. One of them is, if you're, ah, there's a city plan, and now there's a county plan, a regional plan, you go, man, aren't we kind of going overboard with this? It's a requirement. I mean, it's a requirement. And regional planning and regional consensus is really what they're looking for whenever, in order to get state or federal funds. The other thing I was going to say is CRTPO has, is looking at possibly adding staff. And the reason that they are looking at adding staff is, I mean, 150 to do this study, I mean, that's not a small piece of change. And when you look at how many of the members of CRTPO are needing to do this, there's kind of two problems. It's expensive to outsource it. And then the other problem is, you outsource it, and let's say Dudley Schmedlapp is the consultant they bring in. You still have to have staff people that get them up to speed. Then Dudley Schmedlapp does a study, hands you the three-ring binder, cashes his check, and then all the institutional knowledge that Dudley Schmedlapp has while he's creating this walks out the door. And then if you have your next-door neighbor who needs one of these studies done, a lot of that institutional knowledge you wouldn't have had to pay for again if that person was on your staff. So just know that as we move forward, this may end up being something that new staff at CRTPO would do. And of course, if they do that, our dues to be in CRTPO might go up. But to be honest with you, compared to what we'll have to pay for this, not only would it probably come out in the wash, it would probably come out a little bit better. But anyway, I just want to let you know on the funding part of this, what that may look like in the future.
Transportation planning is never going to go away, so we're going to always be in this. And I think the important takeaway from this is, is we have to package it well to score well, to be funded well, to get the asphalt laid.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Matthew. Consent?
Consent.
Consent.
Thank you. The next item is a request from Tax Administration, and Dean Lael and Mr. Furtis are both here to answer any questions and make this presentation for approval of a sole-source award contract with Pictometry to perform two countywide pictometry imagery captures over seven years.
Good evening, gentlemen. Iredell County has partnered with Pictometry since 2013. The board did make a sole source award to Pictometry to do imagery captures and flyovers. Since that time, pictometry has become very integral in many, many county departments in our operations. We use pictometry imagery in several other departments, tax, emergency management, planning, 911 dispatch, addressing GIS, et cetera. And a lot of these departments have done a lot of their internal operations built around the pictometry imagery. It's been discovered that the pictometry imagery needs to be updated. It's been quite a while since we've done that original, those original projects. It's time to upgrade that so that we can keep up with accurate information and data for each of these departments. To make this upgrade, Pictometry offers the county a long-term contract to do two countywide imagery captures over a seven-year period of time. The first project will be done in winter of fiscal year 2021, the second in fiscal year 2425. Included with this, of course, will be access to their pictometry platform and customer support and maintenance. The total cost of the first project, winter 2021, is $294,953, which does include a 10% long-term incentive. The second will be, second project over 2425, will be $291,983, and has the same terms, again, with that 10% long-term discount. The payments for this will be budgeted over a three-year period of time after each capture is made. They have looked at other systems over the years. However, none of the systems will provide seamless compatibility with the pictometry product. If we do try to go with a new system, then we're going to be moving to a new platform. It's going to require a lot of intensive transition time, training, and of course, data conversion, et cetera. It just makes the process, it is going to make the process a lot more expensive if you try to do that. For that reason, staff is requesting a sole-source award and approval and signature on a long-term contract with pictometry. And if so approved, the board does have a contract in the clerk's file for signature by the board chairman. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer those, or we do have Malia Miller with the Tax Department here for the pictometry side of that.
How does this compare with our last contract cost?
Honestly, I did not look at the last contract to compare them. The prices are similar, but there's going to be quite a bit of difference over time.
And this is going, this would run us for about a 10-year period? If we do it, we can refer to the data that it captures for like the next 10 years?
Yes, sir. It'll be done over a seven-year period, and shoot covers for 10 years, correct? Two appraisals. Covers us for two appraisals.
Two appraisals?
Yes.
2023 and 2027.
Is this, was this budgeted? I don't see it budgeted.
Payments will not be made until after the captures are made. This is a long-term incentive contract, which means we sign it now, but it doesn't take place until 2021. At that time, we'll make an appropriation for the first year's payment after the capture is made.
That's very important to this board that we plan for that.
Yeah, I mean, do we need to start just tucking money away each year so that this hits us?
We can certainly do that, yes. And we have money that we put aside for the reappraisals. So this money, that money could help cover that expense, and I think that's what Ms. Miller may be getting ready to tell you.
Do it budgeted each year, but it would be covered by the reappraisal reserve fund that we have.
How much is in the reappraisal reserve fund?
Over $400,000.
I mean, these are, you know, these are $300,000 bites, and I just, you know, I mean, I know we've cop, we've paid for these before. I'm just trying to get some idea of, are we paying $300,000 now per shoot, and before we paid $250,000, or did we pay $150,000?
You can get that information back to us.
I think we've got that information, if you give us just a minute here. In 2013, excuse me, we had the first project, I believe, and I've got the contracts here, but I'm just reading them as we're talking here, a little over $107,442. That was for a different, that was for a different project. That was a nine-inch aerial view of the entire county. Then we had a second project that was $137,000. Then we, we came back and asked to have the imagery updated from nine-inch to nine-inch and six-inch, which added to that contract. which added to that contract. And it changed that second project from right at 137 to 288. That also included though, that included Planometrics and Change Finder, which accounted for about $108,000 of that. So 180 for the second project, from 137 to 180, plus your money for that second project last time.
So the ladies out, lay out these numbers for us. I think we'd like to see them, just to see how it fits in the past pattern and that we've got sufficient funds to be able to take care of. I mean, you've mentioned several amended contracts. You know, is it, are these contracts anticipated to be soup to nuts, everything you need?
These are not expected to be amended at all. You know, what we're working with right now and have requested from them is six-inch imagery for the entire county and then three-inch from the, I guess, the lower part of the county. And Chris Bridges has got a map. If you'd like to see the map of, of the area that's going to cover. And of course, we can do a demo if you want to see that. But we can certainly put those numbers in a spreadsheet and, and show you what each contract amount was and compare it to what, what this is.
And the, the funds that you have in the account to take care of this, what were the, how do we fund that account over what period of time? And what are we going to have to do to replenish it for the next time around? Sounds like we've got enough in there to take care of this, obviously, but we've got a plan to recharge that amount down the road. So the county commissioner sitting here 10 years from now, or seven years from now, or whatever, you know, can, can say, oh, well, we got the money in the bank. Not a problem.
The, the Tax Office uses this to look for new roofs, right?
Well, and new buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah. We use it for the reappraisals. And it's, it's just an invaluable tool for us. It keeps the appraisers from going door to door and trying to see what's out there.
Right.
We can actually see what's in the back of, of the property. And it's just a great tool for us.
It's not so much seeing the roofs as it is seeing under the roofs because if someone's just got, oh, I just have a shed back there, you know, it's all open air. Well, when they enclose it and then they put electrical and heat and air and all that, they've essentially upgraded it to a point where it, the assessors are going to be real interested in it. But they can't tell if it's just directly down.
Right. Um, is Chris is here? So will, will this, will this fit right in to your GIS system? Because you've actually got it to where I can, I and most people can actually pull up our mapping GIS and do stuff with it. It's, it's a whole lot more user-friendly and you can look at it with an aerial photograph or without to include topo lines, water, flood zones. I mean, there's really a lot of valuable information. So if we're going to a new system, can you still use that?
Yeah. Well, this isn't a new system. This is just a continuation of a project that we've had. So it is a separate, it's a web-based viewer now. We're using it internally in the county. So throughout departments, I mean, it's solely right now web-based viewer. So pretty much everybody has access to that in the county. So.
What departments use this imagery?
What departments use it?
Gene's question is what departments in the county use this?
Yeah. So the oblique imagery is what the pictometry is. It's a view kind of at a 45-degree angle and it's, it's captured at directions, so north, south, east, west. And there's an ortho-type view. It's a straight-down view of that. So the Tax Office is primarily, you know, a big user of those appraisers in the mapping department. Other departments in the county, the planning department, planning zoning inspections.
Is this time-sensitive or can this be tabled to the 17th meeting? Give us time to get more details on it?
Certainly, I think, I think it could be.
It's not based on a time. No, sir. It's not time-sensitive.
And if I may circle back, Chairman Mallory, you asked a question regarding the funding. We, we have a reappraisal budget that we put money in every year. We do a reappraisal every four years. So what we're doing every year is we're putting some money aside, which will fund that reappraisal. So it won't be a big shock to the budget when we get there. But we also have in-house appraisers. And so once we finish a reappraisal, we start a reappraisal. So it, but that's where the money comes from that, that pays for these types of things.
Okay.
We ran a little bit.
What does this system do that the GIS that Ken's talking about will not do?
Yeah. So the imagery and the pictometry is an oblique-type imagery. So you can see the elevation of the structures. So you can actually do measurements, lengths and areas. So you can get square footage of roofs and driveways. You know, the GIS, we've got the ortho imagery. So it's just a straight-down shot. You know, you can't see the sides. You know, if it's a multi-story structure, you can't really see that in a, a straight-down shot.
To count roofs, in other words, when you're doing this imagery, somebody's still got to look at it to see if there's roofs or there's structures there that weren't there. But you, do you, what's the advantage? You still have to send somebody out there to verify? Or are you getting the measurements and billing people or finding people that didn't pull permits? Or what is the advantage over the GIS with a full-time and staff member looking at it and then going out there checking it out? What's the, what's the pros and cons? I'm not catching it.
Can we have software that actually spots the differences?
Well, we, we did use a software during the last reappraisal that did that. But, but we have found we have such a good permitting system that, that the appraisers are getting the new construction for the most part. There are going to be close to 100,000 parcels to review in 2023. It's just almost impossible with the staff we have to get everybody out to those parcels. It moves pretty quickly when you can use a product like pictometry and it has a measuring tool. It allows the appraisers to do a lot of the work from in the office. It's very accurate. It, it is not available to the public. And, and I just want to make that clear. Pictometry is for internal use only. And what Chris has on GIS, those are, I'll let him give you the details on that. Those are other aerials. They're, they are not as useful to us. These images would be, it's right at 18 months prior to the next reappraisal.
You pretty much updated your system internally, what you're saying?
Yes. It would update what we have. The last flight was in early 2017. And we used that for the 2019 reappraisal. So right now, we're, we're basically starting over because within four years, we want to review all of the parcels in the county.
That explains why it costs more. I, this ma, this makes a whole lot more sense now.
It's taking updated images.
Yeah. We, we, we had a.
Different images.
Yes.
To Gene's question, we had a briefing on this at a previous pre-agenda where we were shown, it's essentially side-looking.
Right.
It's oblique. So it just reveals a lot more detail about the structures underneath the roof, which gives them a clue about whether they need to send an inspector out for discovery.
I'm good, I'm good with it, Chairman. I just wanted to make sure that they elaborate on it in detail because the public, the more the public hears the differences and the pros over the cons and the advantages of being able to be more accurate in their assessments and their measurements and things, I'm, I'm, I'm for it. I just wanted to get them to clarify publicly the, because it's a big nut to, to pay for. And I wanted people to hear the reason that it pays for itself in reality at the end of the day.
I'm willing to do this on consent. My, my concern was that the gap, but I mean, this isn't the same photos that we were getting before. These are additional ones from the sides. It's going to cost more. I'm okay. You want to put it on consent? I'll do consent.
The, one thing I want to stress there too is that we run a fine line when we use technology for looking at people's property. This is not something to look into somebody's hot tub with.
No, it's not.
This is something to determine, is there a structure, you know, has that structure, was it there in the last appraisal?
Right.
Is it a discovery item or what?
That is correct.
I just want, I just want people to understand that we still respect their privacy. We're not just spying on them.
Absolutely. This is just a tool to, to look at the structures and to see, see what needs to be listed for real property.
I think the last time they took those pictures, I had 60 Boy Scouts camping out there. Lord knows what's on the film.
I don't think they were looking in the puke tents.
Yeah.
I'm good for consent as well.
I'm good.
All right. Consent then?
Consent.
Consent.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Kate, then the final item is a request from Human Resources. And Ms. Gregory is here for this request to ask for approval of public officials' bond renewal in accordance with North Carolina general statutes.
Good evening. Thank you. My request hopefully will be very simple. Each year, the Board of Commissioners are required to approve bonds for our public officials, and it has to be recorded in the minutes. And so basically, I'm requesting for the approval of the bonds for the finance director, appointed tax collector, deputy collectors, and elected officials in the positions of county sheriff and register of deeds.
Are there any questions? Sandra?
Consent.
Consent?
Yeah.
Thank you.
They can sleep well. All right. So we just have one item, 8.2, to roll over to the seven o'clock hour. And otherwise, there are no announcements of any vacancies on boards or commissions. There are no appointments for this evening. Is there any unfinished business that the commissioners are aware of? This is not a public comment period, this meeting. Is there any new business that anyone anticipates? Okay. Can you give us a preview of the county manager's report?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Okay.
I'm, I'm trying. I, I'm anticipating.
Pre-word report.
That's right. I was trying to keep this meeting brief in anticipation of the public hearing that may happen.
Very good. There's no closed session for this evening. I think that there are some, at least one task force briefing on strategic goals. So we will go ahead. If there's nothing else, nothing further, we'll adjourn the pre-agenda meeting and we'll resume at seven o'clock for the regular meeting.